It is 5:30 and I'd like to call the meeting to order for a planning commission on June 28, 2003 at this time. Ms. Rudman, I get a roll call, please.
Yes Chairman. Chairman Zaragoony?
Present.
Vice Chairman Miller?
Here.
Michael York is absent. Commissioner Mandel?
Here.
Commissioner Salazar Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Mottagi?
Here.
Commissioner Lerma?
Here.
Commissioner Hedrick?
Here.
We have a quorum to conduct the meeting.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the public comment. Could you please read the public comment for the record?
Citizens will be allowed to attend and make public comments in person at city planning commission meetings. The public is invited to speak on any agenda item and any other items that pertain to the planning commission. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you choose to speak during this period, you will not be allowed to speak again when the specific item is being considered in order of the agenda. And if you choose to speak, please sign in at the sign in sheet at the entry door. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to approval of the absences for Commissioner Mandel and Munoz.
Chairman, we need to ask if there's anyone who wants to speak at public comment at this time.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, at this time, does anyone would like to speak on a public comment? None, I will close the public comment and moving on to the approval of the absences for Commissioner Mandel and Munoz.
Make a motion that we approve the absences of Commissioners Mandel and Munoz as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to approval of the minutes for the planning commission on June 14, 2023. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes from June 14, 2023.
A second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing say no. Motion carries. Moving on to the consent public item for item number A and B. If you would please read item number four. Commissioner Mottagi will be abstaining from item number four and then we will come back to the rest, please.
Okay. So reading consent item B for zoning. This is a rezoning for Southern Builders Company LLC. This is a rezoning from the RS6 Single Family District to the RSTH Town Home District. Staff is recommending approval for this item. At this time, you can, if there's any questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioners, any question for staff on item number four? None. At this time, I'd like to open public hearing regarding item number four. Does anyone would like to speak regarding this item? None. I will close the public hearing and entertain a discussion or a motion on item number four, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve item number four as presented by staff.
I second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing say no. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item one, two, and three, please.
Continuing with consent item A, two, and three. Plats. First item is Padre Island Corpus Christi Sea Pines, Unit 1, Block 14, Lot 24R. This is a replat of .29 acres. Item number three, Roblex Industrial Subdivision, Unit 3, Block 2, Lots 5 and 6. This is a final plat of five point. Can't read the number. Five point eight acres. The plats are meeting the TRC comments and the Texas Local Government Code and staff recommends approval for these items.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any question for staff for item one, two, and three? None. I will open the public hearing for item one, two, three. Does anyone would like to speak regarding any of these items? None, I will close it and entertain a motion for further discussion of that.
Make a motion that we pass items one, two, and three as presented by staff.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing say no. Motion carries. Moving on to the zoning, item number five.
And then there's a glare. Oh, there we go. Ask me later. Apologies, I couldn't read. Read only will be fine. Yeah. Good evening Commissioners. Elena Buenteal with Development Services. The case before you is number 052301. The applicant is Winco Investments LLC. The subject property is in District 3. As some of you may recall, this case was presented at the May 31 meeting and subsequently tabled to today's meeting. The rezoning request is for a property at 6302 Old Brownsville Road, just north of Old Brownsville Road and Saratoga Boulevard. The request is from the FR Farm Rural District to the RMH Manufactured Home District. The purpose of the rezoning request is for the development of a mobile home park. The subject property is in the Port Airport Violet Area Development Plan, last updated in 95. The future land use map proposes light industrial uses. The existing zoning is FR with existing land use and the existing land use is agricultural. To the north, uses are vacant and agricultural, zoned FR and IH. To the south, uses are vacant, agricultural, residential estate, low-density residential, and commercial, and they're zoned FR, RS6, CG, and IL. To the east, uses are agricultural and zoned FR. And to the west, uses are agricultural and low-density residential, zoned FR and RS6. The case was originally heard on May 31, 2003, and staff's recommendation at that time was denied due to incompatibility with the air insulation compatibility use zones or the ACUS. Since then, staff has met with the applicant and discussed concerns with the uses in the ACUS. As a result, the applicant has amended the application as illustrated on the slide. The amended application removed the tracts of land that were not compatible with the ACUS. The original application included the green and the red areas, and the amended application is just the red area. As a reminder, the clear zone, no development, as Andrew Demus would say, simply crops and cows. The APZ1 recommends limited industrial development, no occupancy. The APZ2 recommends commercial development with reduced occupancy and single-family homes with a density of only two units per acre. As you can see in the ACUS map, the application as amended proposes approximately 75 acres of land that are no longer in the ACUS. Regarding the required public notification, 18 notices were mailed out inside the 200-foot buffer, six notices mailed outside the buffer, zero received in favor, and zero in opposition.
Can I ask you a quick question? On the current image that you've got up here, just for clarity.
Yes.
The subject property is appeared to be colored, like an APZ color, but it's not.
So the subject property, the application was amended to, and this map was made by staff sort of last minute. So the way that it is illustrated on here is completely outside
Right.
of the ACUS.
Yeah, so the base color is the white that kind of surrounds it.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Staff notes the following. The proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the future land use map but is consistent with broader elements of the comp plan. For example, the proposed rezoning will provide housing that can meet diverse needs of the community at all income levels and potentially at all stages of life cycle. It is consistent with the ADP, which seeks to minimize incompatible uses. And staff also notes that the Navy and Corpus Christi Airport provided feedback on the case and they concur with staff's recommendation of approval on the rezoning from FR to the RMH District. Staff stands by for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any question for staff? Commissioner Mandel?
Thank you. Was the amended application represented to the Navy?
Yes. Both the Navy and the airport were part of the discussion.
Cool, thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
I just wanted to thank y'all for working with the applicant and coming up with a solution that works for everybody.
Not a problem at all. That is the goal.
And I want to make sure that moving forward, that we always, you know, have that dialogue.
Seek to find a resolution.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Noted, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing regarding item number five. Does anyone would like to speak regarding this item? None, I will close it and entertain further discussion or a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Item number four is, I'm sorry, item number five is presented by staff.
I second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing say no. Motion carries. Moving on to item number six, rezoning the property on Park Road 22.
Again, good evening Commissioners. For the record, Elena Buenteal with Development Services. Before you use case number 0623-02, the applicants are Ron and Vanessa 3 LLC and TRR Development LLC. The case is in District 4. Again, as some of you may recall, the case was presented at the last planning commission on June 14 and subsequently tabled to today's PC meeting. The rezoning is for properties at 15821 and 15826 South Padre Island Drive and 15822 and 15826 Palmera Avenue. The request is from the CRIO Resort Commercial District with the island overlay to a CRIO planned unit development, with a planned unit development. As you may recall, the proposed use of the rezoning is to allow for the development of a townhome community. The development plan proposes associated and shared amenities. The property is approximately 1.08 acres. The proposed development would include single-family, the existing single-family home and/or community center and eight detached townhomes. The subject property is in the Padre Island Area Development Plan, which was updated in 2021. The future land use proposes commercial uses along SPID and along one lot of Palmera Avenue. The remaining lot on Palmera Avenue proposes medium-density residential. The subject property again is currently zoned CR2 with the island overlay. To the north, uses are commercial and vacant, zoned CR2IO. To the south, uses are vacant, zoned CR2IO. To the east, there are park uses, zoned farm rural, and to the west, uses are low-density residential, zoned RS6. The case was originally heard again on June 14, 2023, and staff's recommendation at that time was denial. Staff's analysis found the proposal did not meet the planned unit development criteria. Since then, staff has met with the applicant and discussed opportunities for improvement. As a result, the applicant has augmented the application to more adequately address the PUD criteria. The PUD now addresses staff's comments, still propose eight individual detached townhome units. And each proposed townhome will have direct access to Palmera Avenue and SPID via a private access easement. This is an overview of the proposed master site plan. For Lot 1, well, as with all planned unit developments, a table is used to define the UDC standards and then a deviation where it is proposed. For Lot 1, a minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet is required. The PUD proposes 2,600 square feet. The minimum lot width required is 50 and the PUD proposes 30. Minimum building separation is 10 feet. The PUD proposes 7. And note, this will be subject to building separation standards, as well as the minimum side yard, which is 10 feet, and they propose 3.5. The minimum rear yard is 10 and the PUD proposes 0. A five-foot sidewalk will be constructed along Palmera Avenue, no sidewalks along SPID. For Lot 2, the PUD proposes deviations from the minimum lot area, minimum lot width, maximum building height, minimum street yard, and parking requirements. As Lot 2 will be used as a private access road and provide drainage utilities. The private access road is approximately 9,000 square feet and the retention areas are approximately 2,300 square feet. For lots 3 through 10 are there for the eight detached townhome units. The UDC defines townhomes as attached and the PUD proposes detached units. Garages and storage will be downstairs, living quarters upstairs. The minimum lot width required would be 50 and the PUD proposes 30. The minimum street yard required is 10 and the side yard is 5. The PUD proposes 0 as this yard will be the private access easement and side yards of 3.5 feet. The minimum building separation is 10 feet and the PUD proposes 7. Maximum building height is 45 feet and the PUD proposes no maximum building height. We have a visual of the proposed lot layout. For public notification, 28 notices were mailed inside the required 200-foot buffer, five notices outside. Staff received one notice, totally 1.2%, accounting for one separate owner. The owner stated their reason for the opposition is essentially being unhappy with the city and construction on the island by way of construction waste.
What's this about bombs?
He had some interesting commentary regarding previous issues with correspondence with the military and potential explosives. And then he goes on to explain that he is upset about previous construction that has gone on and how essentially during construction, they were not very clean or picked up after themselves. And therefore opposes the rezoning.
Got it. Sorry to interrupt, but I just didn't want to omit that part.
It was quite a bit.
Okay.
One more slide very quickly. Staff notes the following. The PUD meets the fundamental applicability criteria by providing cultural and recreational amenities, providing innovative land use concepts and a variety of housing types, and provides for a separation of vehicular traffic and pedestrians. Staff recommends approval of the change in zoning and stands by for comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any question? Commissioner Miller?
I have a question. Is there any way possible that we could pull up the former proposal and you could just kind of run through the differences and the accommodations that were made?
Or if you? I can address the additions that were made. They added the sidewalk along Palmera Avenue. So now there's actually a network of the internal sidewalk along the private access easement. There's going to be a sidewalk there and then that will connect to a five-foot sidewalk along Palmera Avenue on that frontage. The retention areas will also serve as an amenity. There will be enhanced landscaping along the edges of the retention areas and they're planning on putting benches and maybe some barbecue pits there, right? They also, with respect to the single-family home that fronts Palmera, that could be utilized as a community center. Or they have a provision in there where that lot could be subdivided in the future and utilized for a community center. So there would be a community amenity there as well. So essentially, they've enhanced the community aspects of the development and they've provided that transportation network. That was one of the criteria within the PUD as well.
So the connecting road between Park Road 22 and Palmera wasn't originally in the original application?
The sidewalk along Palmera was not in the, they wanted to have a waiver from that.
Okay.
And we felt that that should be connected and there's, you know, a school on the corner. So there's a need, you know, to build that sidewalk network. Likewise, the property to the south is undeveloped currently and that has potential for extending that sidewalk network. So we felt that was a critical segment that needed to be installed with this development.
But there was always a sidewalk internally in the development?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
But the development is going to be a gated development, correct?
I'm not aware of a gate.
I thought I read in the notes that it would be a private.
They referenced it as a private access easement, but during the conversations, they didn't mention that it would be gated strictly. That ingress would be on SPID, egress on Palmera. So we would have one-way traffic only. City services would be allowed through there and that there would be a sidewalk.
Okay, and that, the back-to-back dimension of that road is what?
Of the private access easement?
Uh huh.
26, I believe so.
Yes, I believe it is 26.
And what is the developer's plan for parking?
So there's.
The townhome units would have parking underneath that could be used, the garages for parking and/or storage, depending on what the owner would like to do. And there's going to be additional parking in the first lot.
Okay.
And we discussed with them that if they did change the use into a community center, we would have to look at the parking.
Yeah, because there's just absolutely no room here and the fears that I get is seeing the cars over the sidewalk up against the garage doors. And then in the event, God forbid, that EMS or fire trucks or anything would have to get through that easement to access one of these units, it's super tight.
Yeah, our other concern was that access to Park Road 22. And so they did confirm that yes, that there would be an access there.
Does the Fire Marshal typically review these proposed plats?
Yes.
And so he's?
And that was one of their concerns, so that's been addressed.
So he's seen it and is in concurrence with the current plan?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I got. Sorry, that was a lot.
No problem. Anyone else have any question for staff? I do have a question. This proposed change of a zoning increased the density of the project. So the site plan that you're showing us, is that just a very preliminary site plan or has there been any?
Once the, if the PUD is approved by council, the site plan will become part of the ordinance and you will have, they will have to follow the specific site plan.
And just to remind you, in the base zoning, you already have townhomes that are allowed.
Okay.
So that's already allowed through the base zoning, so it's, you know, primarily, you know, the lot size that's being dictated by the site plan.
But with the changes that we're talking about, is there, I'm pretty sure somewhere written that the applicant need to follow with those guidelines, like you mentioned, as far as the sidewalk and things like this?
All of those changes have been written into the document.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it will be in the written document for the record. Okay. Any other question for staff? None. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for item number six. Does anyone would like to speak regarding item number six, please? None, I will close the public hearing for item number six and entertain a further discussion or a motion on this item. Commissioners, any question for staff? Any discussion, any?
I just, I mean, this all sounds really good and it sounds like they've gone through a lot of the red tapes on making sure that all this is being addressed from the last presentation of the denial. And it just seems like, I just want to make sure that everything that's being presented here tonight is going to be something that the city is going to follow with all of the developments that they're presenting here tonight. You know, because this is, I mean, just like Commissioner Miller was mentioning about these units that they're going to be building. They seem like, you know, there's not going to be much room for a lot of these, you know, the emergency trucks or the fire trucks to be coming in there. And I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to have that for the people that do live there or renting or whatever it is that they're going to be doing with this property. do live there or renting or whatever it is that they're going to be doing with this property, right?
So if city council adopts it, it becomes, you know, a part of the zoning. So that site plan and all of the PUD requirements stated in the PUD plan are part of that. So when it comes time for building permit review and site plan review, then the PUD document is utilized for that review. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
I have two other questions, it just popped into my head. With, with our current ordinance with regards to short-term rentals, is short-term rentals normally allowed in CR two?
I think there are restrictions, I believe there are restrictions on the island, but I'm not the-
I thought it was only in multifamily districts.
Yeah, I think it's only single-family, right? Because, I mean, hotels are allowed in CR two, so.
And this is CR two.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about short, so from a-
No, I understand, but yeah.
The, the, the ordinance had very specific guidelines with regards to what, and then there was, there was a map that was, that was distributed.
The prohibition on short-term rentals within the UDC only applies to, I'm sorry, single-family districts.
Single-family districts.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're not setting precedents with this to open up a can of worms that's already been fought ad nauseam because there, I remember seeing whenever the STR discussion was on the table, there was a very specific heat map that showed this is red, this is white in the clear, and I, I just wanted to, you know, that just popped into my head. There was something else. So whenever, are we setting any other precedents with this particular PUD with regards to lot widths or lot sizes or?
Well, essentially, we review PUDs on a case-by-case basis.
Mm-hmm.
So we're looking, I mean, that's the whole point of the PUD. It's, it's its own creature, right? It has its own acreage or dimensions and so, you know, we do it on a case-by-case basis. I don't think we're necessarily setting a precedent, but what we try to do is review it based on the PUD criteria and see how that, that PUD can meet the criteria. So that's the primarily, the, you know, what we review for.
Mm-hmm.
Past, if we, you know, approve it.
Mm-hmm.
The PUD.
That, that is correct. But I mean, that's the whole point of the PUD, that it's, each project is unique. And so you're looking at it from that perspective.
Yeah, each project is, is unique, but usually we have a little more graphic representation, like typically when we have one of these, it's really tight. We would have a, a street section showing the relationship between the face of the townhome, you know, a, a large truck, a small car, you know? I just don't have that here and, and I don't have good answers for, you said twenty-six foot for the easement, but what's the actual lane width on this one-way?
I've already closed the public hearing.
We have the applicant, representative for the applicant in the audience.
And we still, we still have to open the public hearing for this item, right?
We did.
Oh, we did?
We did, I closed it, so. Are you representing the applicant?
Yes.
If you, if you ha-
I will consider open the public hearing if you, I asked specifically if you wanted to speak regarding this item, so.
Yeah, I just didn't think there was going to be any-
No problem. If you state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Francisco Medrano Jr. I have an address on my ID of twelve seventeen Court Place in Harnett, Texas. I did not renew my lease. I signed a lease somewhere here. I'm not, I haven't memorized the address, but it's in corpus, I promise you. There's clarification on that, there is no section width on there. It says that it's a twenty-five-foot access easement and it's completely paved.
So-
If you want to bring up the, the visuals again, it'll, it'll clarify it for you.
Yeah, I can't see it. I mean, does that include the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's drawn up. If you, you want to bring it up on the screen?
It is in the presentation only and it's very difficult to view.
Maybe if you could bring up the PUD plan, would that be in the PUD?
It's not in the Y drive.
It's the aerial of the proposed layout. It has an annotated call of an access easement and it's fully paved. There is no section of the road.
I don't have the attachments in here.
The sidewalk? Normally it's five-four.
I know, but how wide is the sidewalk for-
It's, it's drawn there.
These are the only ones.
And as she stated, the fire, fire, firefighters have-
We're going to get-
If he wants to articulate that again, he can articulate it again, but she's articulated that, that emergency access and fire access have already looked at it. And it is in there, so let's, let's zoom in. Oh, sorry about that. I gotta hit control and zoom in.
Someone wants to text that, thank you.
Well, let's see if I can move on to the next page.
Attachments.
There was no section. It's all been kind of, there it is.
Here it is, it's twenty-five.
Calls out for the access easement on the lot that's being proposed. It's also shared as an, as an easement, the lot is being shared as an easement as well. And that hatching that you see, that's what's all being proposed to be paid. So there's no section of a road. And then on the bottom, it had even said, when you were asking Commissioner Miller. Sorry, fumbling around with these papers. Here we go.
If I could interrupt for just a minute, if that's all right with you. You have a handout that has the zoning report, the PUD plan is attached to that. And if you go to the master-
On the bottom of it?
Site plan of the PUD plan.
It tells you the pavement.
Is it in here? It's not in here?
The confusion may be from the, the road being called twenty-two.
Now that I do recall, FIRE mentioned the location of the nearest hydrant and that their equipment was long enough to be able to go into the development with it.
The, the thing that, that always concerns me, especially in a, in a short-term rental environment on the island and stuff like that, is mostly EMS, right? Somebody's partying too much, falls down the stairs, especially because you're going to have second story and so making sure that, yeah, there's a million different things that people could get banged up and need an ambulance to be able to get through there. And, and, and I'm not trying to pick on you or anything like that, but we've had a lot of PUDs come in, especially, particularly on the island, where there's been a lot more information shared with regards to how we're going to address these life safety concerns and, because we get a lot of them that come through the door with hammerhead turns and stuff like that. So I am, I am happy to see that this is a actual, you know, through cut, there's no hammerhead turns, but it is one-way. So making sure that within, you know, that, that there's plenty of room because inevitably you're going to have, or whoever ends up buying these units is going to have tenants that push the envelope with regards to parking and they're going to park up against the, on the sidewalk and up against the building. And making sure that there's breathing room in there, you know, helps me sleep at night a little bit. And then making sure that, you know, we're being, what, what I'm always a big advocate of and what I really push for is that there is fairness and, and equality between everything that comes through this door. And I've sat on this, on this panel for, you know, what, five years now? And sometimes, you know, some are more than others with regards to this type of thing. So I just kind of want to get clarity on how wide that street's going to be. So twenty feet, is that what we're saying?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five is the access easement.
It's fully paved.
But they're not giving the dimension on the, with the sidewalk.
Okay, actually, on the plan, though, it shows that the sidewalk is outside of that easement.
On which, on which plan?
I'm looking at the Flamingo Resort Bungalows PUD master plan.
Two annotated arrows, one annotated.
Or am I reading that wrong? Is it within there?
When you read this plan here?
Yes, so it does show it within?
It's within the twenty-five foot.
Okay. I stand corrected, it's within.
They just don't have the dimension for the, for the width of the sidewalk.
Okay.
And so another thing, the sidewalk, it does run in Flamingo's units. That's where it looks like it, that's where the, the, for the, for the, I don't know if there's going to, more likely there's not going to be a, for that side.
Okay.
As far as elevation through the truck.
What, what tools do we have on our side to basically ensure that a minimum twenty-foot wide street section is going to be maintained?
I can provide you one.
They should, they should have been a section with, with the, so the plat was presented at the first time, when this was presented together. It was approved, we have to look at that.
Approved conditionally, based on the, based on-
But, but does the plat show that? The one that was conditionally approved, does that show a minimum twenty feet?
Probably has the-
If it doesn't, it will be needed to be amended.
But it does have to be a lot.
The last meeting?
It's have to be a lot.
And get a flat though. So the sidewalk is additional to twenty-five feet?
No, it's within.
Yeah, and, but it's a one-way street, so I'm okay with a twenty-foot back-to-back street section because that allows for a, an ambulance to get through and if somebody, some jerk decides to park there, double park there, then there's still, there's still a path.
But I don't think you would get twenty feet.
Well, if he's got, yeah.
Five feet, minus five.
That, that, the sidewalk would probably shrink to about four feet to give you room for your curb and-
We're saying the elevation is going to be the same, so it's going to be outlined like a sidewalk, but a car could probably still.
Yeah, but you still got the, the curb on the, on the other side.
Yeah.
So that's a, that eats up a foot, so you, you'll have your twenty-foot there and then the sidewalk.
I was trying to pull up the plat itself, if I can get to that folder from this computer.
If you can access Legis藏from there?
Yeah.
It'll be on the planning commission meeting of the fourteenth.
Oh, good, good idea.
Sorry, needed a moment for that.
Good idea.
Thank you for your patience.
That would be under, no, I was going to go to the minutes from the last planning commission, which-
Fourteenth. But if you can go online, you can-
Oh, just online.
Access the Legis藏document.
There's your curb.
I'm pulling it up right now.
Pull that. One foot.
The future. Conditionally approved.
Call this. Twenty foot. Here you go, here you see it. It'd be, that's what's being called for, if you, if you kind of zoom in and look. And the cross-section of it is, it's all fully paved, maybe with a little lip when it comes to the proposed size, sidewalk. So it's all paved, within these twenty-five feet.
Here's the plan view of it, here's the cross-section of it. Twenty-five.
All paved, maybe a little lip or flush with sidewalk.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty good with it. I'd love to see a street section, but-
I'll hear you. Who do you know you want?
I just, i- is there anything that I can do within my motion that, that would ensure a twenty-foot street section?
It's in place.
A lane section?
Approved conditionally. Approved, the plat was approved conditionally at the last meeting, but what you could do is conditional to the approval of this rezoning. So if you wanted to add any additional language to the document, you can do that. You can recommend that.
Okay. You go with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Mandell? Just one question for applicant.
One question for the applicant. I'm not sure if this was addressed already. You can answer from right there. Is this going to be gated or not?
Out of just common sense, I would say no because of what the EMS and FIRE guys would probably be like, am I going to have the code and add such a-
Yeah, most of them have like a universal code that they, or emergency key access that gives them-
I, I can dig up that information, but I'm just, at this point, I'm just guessing, so let me just look into that.
Okay.
But I would, my guess would be no.
And then what kind of signage are you proposing or what kind of, I'm not sure if it's in the requirements or not, to make sure that someone does not enter the property from, what is that, Palmetra?
Normal practices, maybe striping, stuff like that.
Okay. Because it seems like it could possibly be a cut-through, the Seashore Learning Academy is right there and, and I could easily just see parents trying to drop off their kids and just cut right through, and then someone coming in from SPID making a right, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about that. So what, which is why I'm asking about the gated thing as well, as well as the signage because it's super important. Okay, that's all the questions I have for you. I have one more for staff. Thank you.
Applicant, one second, sir. Let me make sure there's no other question for applicant. Okay, none. At this time, I would like to close the public hearing and entertain further discussion from staff.
So I was just looking at the map overview on, on Google Maps. Did the traffic department have anything to say about this? I mean, I believe the speed limit there is about forty-five, eighty-five, and slowing down to make that right-hand turn onto a twenty-foot easement could possibly result in some pretty nasty accidents. I, just from like a, a personal anecdote, I live off of Cimarron and every time you go from Cimarron towards Lips, that apartment complex has this weird right turn into gated community and I've seen more rear-end accidents there than I've ever seen in my whole life. So I'm concerned about that, especially since there's not this dedicated lane to turn off, slow down and make that right into the property. That's my biggest concern, so I don't know if, I don't know, traffic looked at this as from a risk standpoint?
They made multiple informational comments that are part of your zoning report.
Okay.
It's one of the attachments.
Okay.
Specifically, yes, that is pretty much essentially what they commented, that the driveway access shall conform to the access management as outlined in the UDC and be up to text dot design.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Text dot's got to approve that, that approach.
Yes, they will be getting their, a separate driveway permit through Text dot.
That's a whole different deal outside of our purview.
Any other question for staff?
I have one.
Commissioner Menos?
We received a report in the, in the agenda that was emailed to us, that was a denial, and then a supplementary report today that was an approval from staff. Can you tell me specifically what changed between then and now?
Yes, again, primarily they added the sidewalk along Palmetra Avenue, it's a five-foot sidewalk. They are providing community amenities, so there's two retention areas that will also function as amenity. They're going to introduce landscaping on the edge of the retention areas as well as benches and, and barbecue pits. And then the single-family home may function as a community center or they can, in the future, subdivide that lot and add a community center.
But that's a, that's a, a may, that's just a subjective, it may or may not happen on the community center side, so if that community center-
On, on that, but however, the amenities will still be at the retention and that's, they will be doing that.
So even if there wasn't a community center, everything else still qualifies? So even if there wasn't a community center, everything else still qualifies?
And I think at the crux of your question, there are time constraints and upload deadlines. The same report and presentation had to be delivered because we had an upload deadline. We met with the applicant and reviewed all the criteria where they needed to augment the application after that deadline, which is why you received it in the order that you did.
But just for clarification, if the community center is never built, it still meets the requirements?
Yes, because they still have an amenity.
Thank you.
Any other question? Commissioner, did you go ahead? Any other question? Do I have a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve item number six with the condition that the applicant and the developer maintain a minimum 20-foot street section for tenant and emergency vehicle access.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to director's report.
Yes, good evening, Ninety Nixon Mendez. You had received an email this week, hopefully, regarding our Texas APA conference, which will be occurring November the 8th through the 10th. And the Development Services Department would like to sponsor your registration for that. It's going to be over at the American Bank Center. And so if you're...
When is it out again?
November 8th through the 10th. And so we've heard from a couple of commissioners, but if you would like to attend, please let us know. We're trying to take advantage of the early bird registration right now. So if you can let us know this week would be great. But if for some reason you can't, but you want to attend, just continue to email us and inform us. Pardon me?
Does this include all of us? Are we all able to?
Yes. So again, I encourage you to register. If you haven't been to one of these conferences, it's pretty exciting. A lot of planning commissioners from other cities attend. So, you know, it gives you an opportunity to do some networking and meet with folks across the state. And they're, of course, very interesting sessions that are held during the conference on various topics. I'm sure they'll have one on the legislative updates, so...
Is it like an all-day thing? I'm pretty sure.
Yes, it is. Yes, sir. And that's all I have. No, we're going to underwrite your registration, so...
Will they give us a koozie or...
I'm not sure what they're going to give you, but... I know you usually get a little bag to put your program in and, you know, that kind of thing, so... And a name tag, right? But that's all I have to report.
I'm excited about it.
Me too. Thank you, ma'am. Any future agenda items? None. It is 6:20 and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.